7/20/20 at 5:30 PM at Council Chambers at City Hall. It's 5:39 and establishment of quorum with all members being present. At this time, we'll take a moment of reverence in honor of all those men and women who are serving to protect our liberties and our freedoms, not only here in our own land, but overseas and everywhere, and also for first responders, the health professionals that are on the front lines of dealing with this epidemic, that they may be safe and guarded through all their interactions with all the people they're trying to help. Thank you. Citizens Communications and Recognitions?
Mayor, we had none submitted.
None submitted. So just so everybody's aware.
Yes, we did have our lines open from 12 to 2 and no, we didn't receive any.
So if we do ever go into where we're all out and video conferencing then, the public is given that window from 12 to 2 to put in their request for Citizens Communications?
Correct.
And at that point, we would contact them from the meeting?
Well, they're allowed to submit in writing through via telephone if they have any comments regarding any item here on the agenda.
Okay, so they can just write in writing?
Yes, write in their comments.
Okay. Just wanted everybody to make sure everybody knew that.
That there was informed.
Because that was a question I had. How are they going to be able to interact? Going down to public hearings, item number one, public hearing on the intent to establish a property assessed clean energy act, Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 399, the PACE Act, closing of public hearing and possible action.
Mr. Arturo Marquez has that with economic development.
Will he be presenting?
Yes, he will.
Mr. Marquez?
This is Arturo Marquez, Economic Development Director. No, sir. What I'm going to request is to table this item. I don't know if you can hear me. I'm going to request to table this item because the people that we're going to be presenting, they're actually located in Austin and it would require for them to travel down here. So we decided it's probably best to wait for this to pass over and so we can bring this item back to the court, to the council.
All right, so no action taken on this. We got a motion to table?
No.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilman Salinas, second by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous, tabled. Minutes, item number two, approval of the minutes for March 3rd, March 6th, March 17th, and March 20, 2020. I'm sorry, guys, I didn't mean to bring you all in so many days in March, but.
I will make a remark. I am missing the minutes for March the 25th and the minute for March the 31st for the 5:15 meeting and March the 31st for the 5:30 minutes. I will present them in the following.
Now, I feel even worse that I got them more in my meetings than you.
I know, but I do advise you that I am.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
So motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Monthly reports, item number three. Does anybody have any questions for Bridge? Is Omedo on?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Omedo, what have we been seeing at the Bridge, at the crossings? How is this epidemic, you know, especially with a, I don't think it's part of the declarations, but now we got the Bridge One closing at 3 o'clock, right? It's only open from 7 to 3. What do we see in there in terms of traffic flow?
Well, obviously, since the travel restrictions were enacted and since this whole COVID-19 epidemic, sorry, first and foremost, hello, mayor and council administration. So ever since this happened, obviously, we've been seeing an impact in our traffic flow into Mexico. It happened ever since the restrictions were set in place. I think we've been going down daily 40, 50% compared to last year this same month. As far as the closing of Bridge One, we have noticed that traffic is building back a little bit at Bridge Two, but this is due to the measures that Mexico is taking in pre-screening the traffic going into Mexico. So it has caused a little bit of backup in traffic, but nothing significant because again, traffic flow is very, very low. So that's pretty much the only impacts that we're seeing now, aside from, of course, the most obvious one, that traffic has dropped drastically in passenger and pedestrian traffic only. As far as our commercial, the month of March, this month compared to last year, the same month, it actually increased 1%. So commercial traffic has not been affected whatsoever by the COVID-19 or the travel restrictions, but we have been seen a notice back on pedestrian and.
Omedo, are they still doing the screening as they go into Mexico, into Piedad?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Bridge Department? Thank you, Omedo.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions for Economic Development? For finance grants? Well, I'll go back to Economic Development. Arturo?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
There's a lot of talk on the stimulus package, on the SBAs, loans, and if I read it correctly, some of those loans are going to turn into grants from the governor's conference that we had earlier. So can we start making sure we put that information out to all the business owners? There's so many people affected by this COVID-19, especially our business community, who, you know, they had to shut down. It was pretty much nobody really shopping except for the grocery stores. So if we can get information to all those businesses that have closed down, so they're aware of what's available to them, and just put something out there through your, through our website, through social media, so everybody knows what's available to them.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And in fact, I'd like to take this opportunity to let everybody else in the community know that we've created a website off of the city webpage where we give all the information that's available out there, both through the federal level, state level, and local level. If you go to our webpage and look up under Economic Development, there's a tab that's called Business Resources. That tab gives you everything that's up to date in terms of what's available right now. We're pushing everything that we can in terms of letting people know about this page, in addition to answering any specific questions that people or businesses might have.
Thank you, Arturo.
Mayor, I do want to make a comment if I may. Because I am a business owner, I have, of course, have been researching on all this, and I think it's really important that, Mr. Marquez, I think it's really important that some business owners know that, yes, there is a lot of loans that are going to be coming up, but I did, well, actually, my sister, okay, because she's the one that does all the, you know, whatever questioning, whatever paperwork needs to do with the business. If employers, and I know it's going to be hard for some employers, but if you do not let go of your employees, then it becomes a grant. Like, if you let go of your employees, then that's a loan that you will have to pay back, but if you don't let go of your employees and you continue paying your employees, then that becomes a forgivable grant. So let's just make sure that, you know, if that's, they're inquiring about that, just that, you know, you kind of mention that or put that out there. I don't know, you know?
Apologies. Yes, that is actually correct. The new program that was just released, and it's going to be made available this Friday, which is called the PPP, which is the Paycheck Protection Program. It does, in fact, turn into a grant if you maintain the workforce for 80 days after you've been awarded the funds. So yes, that is correct, Councilwoman. There are certain aspects to the policy that was passed, each kind of varying between the different programs, but yes, we're trying to let people know as much as possible. If not myself, also SBDC is helping with this effort also. They're the ones that are assisting with the technical proportion of it, filling out the applications and all that. So yes, we're letting people know the specifics of each of the programs that are available out there.
That's actually a very simple, two-page application.
Yes.
And anybody can apply if it's a, as long as it's a business that has less than 500 people, so it could be like solo proprietors or something.
That's also correct, Council. That's the, the super partnership was actually not part of the program, but it is now. Again, starting beginning this Friday, it is available to people that have their businesses registered as a super partnership.
How does this affect businesses, nonessential businesses that have closed down with the latest last declaration? Will they be able to apply for that loan slash grant possibly?
Yes, and again, there's a lot of programs out there that are now available. The disaster loan, which was the first one that was made available, and again, this is, this goes out to all of the business community. If you had applied for the disaster loan program that was made available about a week and a half ago, and you were denied this, you can actually reapply under the PPP program, which is the one I just mentioned earlier. So it's available to businesses, again, as you all mentioned, that has less than 500 employees, and again, also to super partners who operate in that manner also.
Thank you, Mr. Marquez. Anybody else have questions for Economic Development?
Let's push that information on social media. Everybody looks at. I think people go more to the City of Eagle Pass Facebook.
Website.
Website than the actual website, so let's push it on both.
It's just really important because we do have a lot of people that really, you know, are not very knowledgeable about it, and it's, they really need to know that before they let go of their employees. If they just hang on, you know, just, it'll be, it'll be worth the sacrifice, I guess, of hanging out to their employees, because those loans, like I said, they will be forgiven. So.
And Arturo, if they can, if they have questions, could they reach out to you, or who else do you recommend they reach out to?
Yes, absolutely. And again, I mean, I know there's a lot of information to kind of break down in a simple conversation, but if they choose to reduce the hours for the workers, there's also programs that go through the state that are able to subsidize a portion of that. So again, there's a lot of options out there. If they need assistance, I do ask that they reach out to myself or SBDC. I'm going to give out my phone number here, so if there's any businesses out there that have questions about this, please reach out to me at 830-325-3305, or SBDC, which, whichever one, you know. If they have business with SBDC, you know, they can reach out to them also.
Appreciate that, Arturo.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Economic Development? Finance grants? Fire? Golf course? Human resources?
I do have a comment more than a question. I just want to make sure that Human Resources does reach out to our employees. There's a lot of confusion about, you know, employees that, I mean, I, I know they're, I'm sure all the directors understand that we're not letting go of anybody, at least not, you know, at this point, but it's really important that Human Resources relates that to all our employees, you know, that at this point, nobody's at risk of losing their jobs, and we need to do a really good job of making sure that, you know, all levels of employees understand that. You know, we don't want them, I mean, it's enough stress as it is, you know, that we're going through, or that they're going through, their families and everyone, so we need to make sure that they know that they're, you know, their insurance still is good, you know, all their benefits, everything else. Please, let's just make sure that Human Resources relays all this important information to them. I'm sure they have, but we just need to make, to double and triple check and make sure that everyone understands what's going on.
Can we go back to the fire, Mayor?
Yes.
Do we have anybody here, like the chief, that we can?
Yeah. Chief Melo, are you on there?
I think logged out, right?
Fire Chief Melo? I think we got Chief Cardona back there. You want to?
No, I just wanted to ask if, I wanted to make sure that the fire has PPE, sufficient materials.
Chief Cardona?
Yeah.
Yes, that is something that they just, they received an order, didn't they?
Yeah, I'm sure it comes in tomorrow.
It comes in tomorrow? Okay. And they actually also received face masks to share with other agencies like the hospital. I know yesterday, UMC reached out to us and said they could, they want just to play it safe, if we had any of the masks to spare, and Chief Cardona said yes, and they would assist them just to make sure they get through their next order, because everything right now is backed up, you know, so.
Yeah, that's, that's all I was going to ask them. I want to make sure they have enough supplies.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we have also placed another, did we place that large order?
I don't know where.
That we were looking to place, but it was going to be like two weeks away, three weeks away.
The order I'm speaking about is one place two weeks.
Two weeks ago. Okay, right.
Yeah, we're good.
Yes, and we're also making sure that the police department, that they're getting the masks also when they have interactions with citizens in the community. Golf course? And I take it that remains closed until we open up all the parks again, right?
They are closed. Maintenance continues though, because as you well know, the grasses and stuff are.
Yeah.
So the maintenance continues, but it is closed.
You don't want, Mayor, I don't see, Mr. Rivera, is he on there? I do have a question about grants. Mr. Rivera, is he there? Is he on?
He was, but.
Oh, okay, Jesse, I just want to make sure, also, you know, going back to all the information that's out there, you know, I might not be correct, but I think I heard the City of El Paso, you know, they received all these millions of dollars in grants. I know that we cannot compare, but I want to make sure that Mr. Rivera's, as well as his team, that we are out there looking for anything that's going to benefit the City of Eagle Pass at this point, you know, the City of Eagle Pass businesses, anything like that, please. Let's make sure that he has looked into everything and anything possible.
And they're aware that this is.
Okay, okay.
Especially with the stimulus package, they got to be able to share all that information, tap into whatever resources.
Yes, please.
We can tap into.
Will do.
Thank you.
Chief, thanks for coming in. Councilman Salinas had a question on the.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for coming, chief. I just wanted to make sure that your man, everybody was well-equipped, and that I wanted to ask you if we had enough supplies, if everything's running smoothly.
The, I don't have the current burn rate as of right now of how great it's done. I know that we do have PPE for our personnel. Chief Melo has implemented conservation efforts with personnel and how they utilize that PPE. With research and science, they have developed their protocol based on that, and how long and for what period of time an EMT can wear a PPE. They can have multiple contacts. They also have a rotation schedule for EMS so that the same people are wearing the same PPE continuously for those amount of contacts that they have. So every effort is being made at the fire department currently with the Chief Melo. I'm not, obviously, assigned over there at this time, so I don't have a current burn rate, but I know that every effort is being made. We did order additional masks that should be coming in hopefully this week. It's hard to tell, but I believe it's 4,000 masks that should be provided to EMS.
Great. How's the call volume recently?
The call volume has dropped. I think they're averaging, if I'm not mistaken, 10 calls a day versus what it used to be. And the protocol that was also implemented by the fire department with the no transport, if you're aware of that, that has reduced, obviously, the transport to 4,000.
Okay, all right. Thank you, chief.
And I know we were trying to find a mask for the community. Where are we on that one, chief?
Not that amount. It's very scarce.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of fraud out there at this time. As a matter of fact, we just had a meeting a little while ago with some other entities, and it's difficult to determine reliable vendors. They really have to do their homework on the supplies of what's available, but it is scarce.
And it is an effort that we've been trying to find masks, and it's tough to get them. It's taken three weeks to get them, so. And unfortunately, because, what was it, Jesse? We can't buy directly from?
Mexico?
Like, yeah, from Mexico.
Yeah, those are higher expectations.
Yeah. It's because, yeah, our counterpart, you know, the San Juan, the Cipatua de Gres, already got 100,000, I think, not today, yesterday, tomorrow, and they're going to be distributing 100,000 masks to their citizens. And that's one thing that we're trying to do also through the EOC, but unfortunately, it's hard to find them right now. And a quick response then.
I know on the CDC website, it does have some ideas on how, I mean, I know this is not what you're trying to do, but I mean, there are other options where they can try to create their own. The idea is just to cover.
Yes.
There is ideas, I know I shared them personally myself, but I mean, there is different options of what you can do to try to cover, to keep yourself covered, like when you're not in your residence.
I shared a simple way to make one on.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's what I'm saying. There's one, there's an actual link on the CDC that shows you different ways where there's sewing or non-sewing for people like me that do not know how to sew.
Yeah.
But there's other options available, so I think it's not something that, you know.
You have to have.
You have to have something that is store bought. I mean, it's, it's the idea is for you not to.
And that's what.
The idea is for you to not spread. It's not.
And that is what Lareta's doing. They're not saying surgical face masks. They're just saying cover up.
Well, I mean, even on the CDC website, it actually recommends that you try to stay away from the NAD files because you try to keep this for the frontline, the medical professionals, and EMTs and that nature. So we want to make sure that we don't, you know, try to order all those because we want to have them where they need to be. So, I mean, you and me as a, you know, a common citizen, we just need to make sure that we just have ourselves, you know, cover ourselves. If you're in an area where social distancing is very difficult to achieve, whether it be a grocery store, pharmacy, or something like that, that's what they're really suggesting, so.
I think we're seeing more and more of that out there in the community where people are covering up.
Mm-hmm.
All right, going on to, well, we already did Human Resources. Did anybody else have any questions for Human Resources?
No.
International Center for Trade, Library, Municipal Court, Parks and Recreation. Jesse, on the parks, did they submit the list of the reimbursements for the baseball softball league that got canceled?
They, over spending is the actual documentation to finance. I know they're really short-staffed right now because most of the staff was sent home. I believe what they're telling the individuals that it will be late April by the time we can process all those payments, because they are several payments, and so it's going to take a while to process all of it.
Okay.
But we do have it on our radar.
All right.
I mean, we just go back to the ICT. I just want to, just as I said, I guess sort of reiterate the fact that, I mean, I know I had already rescheduled a lot of things that have been out there, but just, I just want to make sure that, you know, we appreciate what you're doing to make sure that you're working with the citizens and make sure that all these events that people have planned are rescheduled and that they're being taken care of, because I know it's difficult for a lot of people, but I would just want to, I guess, reiterate the fact that we appreciate what you did to go ahead and reach out to the, you know, our customers of the ICT to make sure that they're taken care of and that we're working with them. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody for ICT? Library, Municipal Court, Parks and Recs, planning and building?
On Parks and Recs, I was going to just maybe a suggestion, because you know how, I mean, obviously, we have all of our students from the EPIZ that are home, and there's a lot of different people that are doing exercise classes and stuff like that. That might be an idea they might want to work on our, on our website, maybe have a certain designated hour where there's like some, join me for exercising, stretching, whatever the case may be, just so that'll be like their PE hour for the different ages of kids. That might be another way for us to outreach to some of our young citizens, just as a suggestion.
You do have several.
I have four different age groups, so it's like.
Zumba classes going on.
I know some of the parents are doing it with their children, but I mean, maybe we have something that's a little bit more tailored to the, the different age groups, to keep them also, you know, get some of their energy burned. It's tough for them being, you know, lucky, if you want to call it that, so.
Planning and building? Placido there?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Placido. Y'all got, y'all got, is it a regular scheduled meeting you have on Thursday, or is this a makeup or the makeup or the makeup?
It's a regular, regular meeting.
All right. And the last two were not, did not make quorum?
Yes, the last one we did not. It was a special meeting. We only had two, two of ours, we didn't have quorum.
I know I sent an email to Maribel. I don't know if she's listening, but, you know, we got to make sure we're reaching out to the board members, especially planning, it's crucial. This is what spurs development or hinders development. And every time we have to cancel a meeting, especially when we're having public hearings, it's costing us money, it's costing investors money. So we really got to reach out to them more frequently, especially leading up to the meeting, you know, like yesterday that the email was sent, and give them a call the day of. That's what I ask of the boards. I mean, you know, just send me the message and call me the day of. That way, you know, I don't forget. So that's just, planning especially is so important. That's what's going to help the community grow. That's where projects come through, and we need to make sure that the board members are informed constantly that they're having a meeting.
Yes, sir. We'll do a reminder.
All right.
Can we get an update of how our appointees have attended at least the last three meetings or something of that nature, so if we need to address it, like if I need to address it with my appointee to make sure not if they want to be excused and replaced, and that's another option. I want to make sure that we're not holding back progress.
Yes, most definitely. I'll get with Maribel so we can get an update.
Thank you. Who has that information? Maribel?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do with Maribel.
Can we get that of all the boards?
Yes.
Are other boards meeting, have they been meeting this year before this, all this started?
The majority have.
Like the Bridge Board?
The Bridge Board hasn't been in a while.
Why is that?
I'm not sure, but they haven't had a meeting in quite a while.
Who runs, does Omedo run that?
Yes, it's the Bridge Board.
Yes, I wasn't really understanding. We currently couldn't have board meetings. The only, I guess, meetings that were going to be held were council and planning the zone.
Correct.
I have been, I have been followed up with getting a meeting set up.
Omedo, just, just to follow up on Mayor Pro Tem Davis with the planning of the zone, for all of you that have a board, if you would give us a list, provide us a list of the last board meetings and how many have been canceled and who has not attended, we really need to make sure that when we, when we get back to having all the meetings, that we're having everybody participate that's been appointed. So that could be an assignment for all of you to provide that on our boards.
We can go ahead and do that.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor and Council and Administration, I just wanted to hear something up in regards to the efforts being done by Mexico. You had asked if they were still doing it. I did confirm that they are still being done at both bridges. Bridge One, they have the screening being done from 7 to 3 PM, while Bridge Two, they are actively doing it, but they don't have a set schedule for it. At the moment, right now, they are, they are screening, but they don't have a set schedule like Bridge One, which is 7 to 3.
All right, thank you, Melo. Police code enforcement? Public works, city shop? Tax office? Thank you, Directors. Ordinances, moving on to item number four. Second reading of an ordinance, amending Appendix A zoning ordinance of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas to amend Sections 5C. to amend Sections 5C, 3D, 1, 2, 6C, 3D, 1, 2, 7C, 3, 7.1C, 3, and 12C, 7. Regulating the year, the rear yard building setback requirements and establishing a maximum impervious cover percentage for R1 and R2 residential districts. Finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Placido?
Yes, Mayor, so this is the second reading. Nothing has changed except for the prior article where we removed 7.2C, 3, which was townhouses. Everything else remains the same. Any new questions on this item?
Everybody remember this one, where we're minimizing the rear setback?
Yeah. Which is good, so I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any further discussion? Nambie, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number five. Second reading of an ordinance providing for the extension of certain boundary limits of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, and the annexation of certain territory lying adjacent to and adjoining the present boundary limits of said city consisting of a tract consisting of a total of 128.934 acres, composed of a 5.174-acre tract vacant land located in Survey Six, Abstract 1110, out of land conveyed to Wico and Associates, LTD, described indeed, recorded in Volume 429, Pages 98 to 106 of the Maverick County, Texas Official Public Records, Maverick County, Texas, and a 11.20 tract park and parkland area located in Survey Six, Abstract 1110, Survey Three, Abstract 997, Survey 934 3/4, Abstract 1243, Survey 31 1/2, Abstract 1091, Survey 30 1/3, Abstract 1238, and Survey 27, Abstract 840, and a 13.56-acre tract detention pond located in Survey 934 3/4, Abstract 1243, and Survey 31 1/2, Abstract 1091, both described indeed to the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, recorded in Volume 1776, Pages 279 to 287 of the Maverick County, Texas Official Public Records, authorizing implementation of the service plan for said territory, assigning thereto permanent zoning district classification, all as described herein and provided for an effective date. That was a lot of numbers.
Lot of surveys.
I think you made a mistake, can you share those?
It's there. Did I say it right?
Yes.
You got it, it was teasing. Placido, the same thing?
Same thing, second reading for the sports complex area annexation. If there's any questions, let me know. If not, we recommend approval of the, of the second reading.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Davis, second by Councilman Gilbada. Any further discussion? Nambie, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item number six. Second reading of an ordinance adopting a new Section 22-91.2, Article 6, Chapter 22, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eagle Pass, adopting provisions for the use of the Art and Cultural Center, adopting new fees, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Placido?
No.
No, Jesse, Jesse, sorry. No, no, Placido?
So this is a second reading, this is a second reading for the ordinance for the regulations on the Art and Cultural Center. Um, basically, what we discussed last time is that we would be allowing this, the use of this facility for, uh, city-sponsored events, for nonprofit and for-profit partnerships, but excluding outright rentals of the facility. So the ordinance remains the same as it was last presented.
I thought we had discussed possibly coming up with an option of...
The, well, the discussion that was had after we had the meeting was that we neglected to discuss the actual public access of the facility. So when it's not being used for an art class, when it's not being used for, you know, the chess classes, it is a art gallery. So it would require us to actually section off actual days where this, where we can actually rent it. Because right now, the schedule is that during the week and the weekend, it's a public building. People can go in and out, view the artwork. And so by, by having it open to rent on any day, that means we'd be closing it off to the public for those days. And that, that's the real difficulty that we still have. Our recommendation still continues to be that we should not rent this facility outright. If somebody does wanna have an event there, it should be in terms of a proposal, rather than just somebody coming and saying, "I wanna have an event there," and us having that wide, um, that, not having the ability to restrict who can rent it and for what reasons. Uh, because there it gets a little bit legal, you know, the, the legal issues arise because if we're allowing this person to rent it for X reason, why not this person for Y reason? Uh, so we would prefer just having it as a proposal process where they come in and say, "Hey, this is the event I wanna have here." It'd be up to the city to negotiate a contract with them and just, you know, where it has to be, the event has to pertain to the use of, the purpose of the facility, which is art and culture.
And how would that not be considered biased as opposed to the other way?
Because it is art and culture, like we have to, we're limiting it to only events that promote art and culture within the community.
Yeah, if we're running out, they see a lot of liability issues that you might not wanna get into.
And ultimately, it's up to the council, it's just, we feel, and from finance, we're always gonna err on the side of caution. You know, when it comes to risk, we try to minimize risk. And so our sentiment is that if we have that, that avenue already available, basically what we're eliminating is just those private party type events, rather than, uh, just limiting it to art and cultural events at the Art and Cultural Center.
Anybody have any other comments?
Mayor, this is our Food and Markets Economic Development Director, if I may speak.
Go ahead.
So we're, we're in agreement with, with Jesse here. Uh, we would like to keep this strategic in terms of the use of the facility. Uh, we find it useful that, uh, we keep it just arts-related to, to what we use. Uh, the building for, that we don't have, uh, you know, just another facility that, that is just being utilized by the public or whatever, and it has a specific purpose. So we're in agreement with this.
Thank you, Toto. Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to, Mayor.
All right, motion made by Mayor Protem Davis.
Second.
Second by Councilman Salinas. Any further questions, discussions? Nambie, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Did you put the other item in? Are we adjourning and then moving on to the other?
No, it's, it's included.
It's included?
Yes.
Where? It's attached.
Yeah, it's attached in the back.
Yeah. Yes, it's that.
Uh, this one I do. Is Eddie there?
Yeah.
Eddie, we gotta go over those legal questions we had earlier. We, we can take this to executive session.
Yes, Mayor, and there's already a process in place by which we can go into executive session. You just need to read it and cite the, it's 551071, a consultation with attorney, and then they'll take us off the Facebook Live feed.
Is it on your screen, Mayor? Is there, there's two?
I don't, I, it's not on mine either.
That one?
I don't have it on paper.
No, she gave me this.
No, we'll give her the agenda.
Well, the agenda, okay.
It's in the back of the agenda.
Okay. I just wanna see it.
You emailed it, you know?
It's just consideration.
So, donde está? I don't see it. Oh, okay, over here.
Yes, that's it.
Well, no, this is the normal one, it's got the word.
But, yeah, but that, it's got the word.
All right, this time I entertain a motion to go into executive session on this item. Motion made by Mayor Protem Yelpando, second by, I'm sorry, Councilman Yelpando, second by Mayor Protem Davis, uh, to go into executive session pursuant to Sections 551.071, Texas Government Code, consultation, and possible approval of a resolution supplementing Resolution 2020-20R by adding additional measures to prepare for, respond to, and mitigate the spread of COVID-19, and other modifications as established in Exhibit 2 attached to the resolution. Let the record reflect, oh, sorry. Um, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Okay, but we're raised, okay, wait.
Yes, we're going to executive session.
Ah, okay, yes, 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 yes.
To go into executive session.
I was thinking, I lost my thought, okay.
Let the record reflect that we, the City Council went to executive session at 6:20 PM on April 7th, 2020. Let the record reflect that council came out of executive session at 7:20 PM on April 7th, 2020, and discussion of, uh, executive session pursuant to Section 551.071, Texas Gov, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and possible approval of a resolution supplementing Resolution 2020-20R by adding additional measures to prepare for, respond to, and mitigate the spread of COVID-19, and other modifications as established in Exhibit 2 attached to the resolution. So, uh, we can go through the list. And... So going to Exhibit 2, Eddie? What we're gonna include in there? Section 25, covering of nose and mouth. Except as provided herein, all persons over the age of five are required to wear some form of covering, such as a homemade mask, scarf, bandana, or handkerchief, over their nose and mouth at all times. And we did come up with some exceptions that we can make it?
Correct you. You want me to give that more?
A, when on your property or riding in a personal vehicle. B, when alone in a separate, single space, uh, for example, your office. C, when necessary for purposes of health, of a health emergency or identification. D, when necessary for consumption purposes. And E, law enforcement and first responders shall utilize their standard operating procedures for you, for the use of this equipment in performance with policy and practice and is authorized by their supervisors. So that, that was 25. So this right here, this is something that we can enact as we discussed in executive session?
Yes, Mayor, you have the authority. There's other governmental entities that have been, um, doing something similar to this.
And also for our businesses with employees, this applies, this can apply to them as you indicated, right?
It would apply to them. We've taken into account, Mayor, uh, council, as we discussed in executive session, that we still have a, somewhat of a supply issue with these masks. And so we're trying to make it as easy as possible to the community by allowing them to make their own, such as the language there, homemade masks, a scarf, a bandana, a handkerchief, anything would, would work so long as it's covering the nose and mouth.
And we gotta go back to CDC recommending it. At first, they were saying no, now they're saying yes because there's a lot of people out there that may have the virus that are asymptomatic. And, and that's the, the reason now CDC has changed their mind. And that's why I think it's good to put that in there for this next amendment or resolution. Uh, we discussed a, a curfew on the, how we can legally enforce that and, and, uh, I, I don't, I don't see how we can legally enforce that without stopping everybody when we have so many essential workers out in the community. Uh, we got our firemen, we got our police officers, we got customs, border patrol, nurses, doctors. Somebody might get an emergency in the middle of the night and, and I just find it too hard for our law enforcement to be stopping everybody to find out if they're one of these essential people. And, uh, so I, I don't know how y'all feel about putting that in there or taking it out.
Um, I believe we agreed in executive session to remove 26, 27, 28, and 29.
Okay. So just wanted to go over the things, but 26, okay, so 26, because it's too much, it's a lot. And I, and you know, I really feel like the majority of our citizens are, are complying. And, and I know the task force is out there and we know the task force is gonna continue to monitor, you know, citizens, making sure they're in compliance with declaration. And so curfew, the travel of one person per vehicle, yes, that, that, there was too many concerns. You know, we could get into legal issues if, you know, we stop somebody from taking their mom who needs a ride to the doctor or something, I, I just don't wanna get into that situation. A closing of streets, so that's something that we can do at any time. So, like, Section 28 is not on there. Section 29, um, because of the commercial aspect of the bridge, it's hard to close it down. Uh, so we can't close commerce. 30, uh, 30 is something that we've been discussing, especially through the LHA. Uh, and there we do have legal authority through the LHA to request, uh, and to put the order. I believe we already have that order in place where anybody that has been tested has to be quarantined at home. They're supposed to be provided the order. Uh, this extends for the legal health authority to also, uh, put that order on maybe persons that have come in contact with somebody that is under, has been tested pending the results. So that is something that we need to put in there, yes. Section 31, religious activities? Yes, just to clarify, on the governor's orders and the governor and the Attorney General came out and, together with a joint statement, uh, yes, religious services can continue, but they have to limit their in-person staff to 10 people or less, uh, when preparing or conducting the video or teleconference services. All individuals must follow the safe social distancing guidelines, including maintaining six, six feet social distancing for employees, volunteers and visitors, regularly washing hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, or the use of hand sanitizer, cover coughs or sneezes regularly, playing high-touch services, and ensure no physical handshakes or contact takes place. Uh, Section 32, this is, uh, just once again, this grants the authority, this would grant the authority to any peace officer or other person with lawful authority, including but not limited to the City of Eagle Pass Police Department and investigators, co-enforcement officers, the City of Eagle Pass Fire Marshal's Office, the Maverick County Sheriff's Office, the Maverick County Sheriff's Office. Office, the Maverick County Sheriff's Office, the Maverick County Constable's Offices, the Maverick County District Attorney, uh, investigators, and all other law enforcement partner agencies are hereby authorized to enforce the provisions of this order in accordance with authority granted under section four one eight of the Texas government code. This declaration hereby authorizes the use of all lawfully available enforcement tools. Uh, and once again, this is, uh, this allows all peace officers to address violations of the declaration. Section thirty three, what determines the sectional services, uh, we're going with ACSA recommendations, which is the ones recommended by the CDC. And if there's any questions, the city of Eagle Pass, E O C, uh, city of Eagle Pass will have the final authority and once they evaluate each situation that may arise. Section thirty four, the penalties in accordance with Texas government code four one eight of point one seven three, person who knowingly or intentionally violates this declaration commits an offense punishable by a fine of up to one thousand dollars or confinement in jail for a term that does not exceed a hundred and eighty days. The penalty for a violation of this section twenty five only shall be a classy misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not more than one thousand dollars. The city manager shall earmark all revenues collected for violations of this section twenty five to expenses related to the COVID nineteen disaster. So just for the record, Eddie, on this one, this would apply, this is applying to twenty five, the, the covering of the mask, covering of your face and nose, right? And these do go?
Yes.
These do go to municipal court?
Correct.
And section thirty five just goes back to prior city orders and declarations. In the event of a conflict with the language contained herein in prior declarations, resolution or orders pertaining to COVID nineteen, this supplemental resolution prevails but, but only as it pertains to specific subject matter restricting, be, restriction being addressed. All other sections of the previous disaster declaration or resolutions issued on March thirty first, twenty twenty under resolution twenty twenty dash twenty R remain in effect. And this declaration shall take effect immediately from and after this issuance. So that's.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Can I just clear something, uh, uh, on section twenty six, twenty seven, and twen- and twenty nine, because the closure of the streets, you mentioned that, we already have the authority. On the curfew restrictions, the travel and restricting hours of operation of the toll booths, it's not so much a legal issue because there's broad powers that, that you have yourself if you wanted to pass, mayoral declaration or the council. It's more so the, the enforcement mechanisms that the city would need to and the expend, the, the time consumption of law enforcement that I understood. But from a, I want to make clear for the public that's listening out there, that you as a governing body do have the authority if you wanted to and be more restrictive with the curfew by, with, with an additional curfew restrictions, for example, or limit travel at specific times or restrict hours of operation for the toll operating booths.
Thank you, yeah, I mean, that's one thing, that's one of the reasons we're putting everything out on the table and we're trying to make, take the steps that are going to better safeguard our community without imposing so much more time and contact from our first responders, you know, when there's this type of epidemic going on that can expose anybody at any time. So yes, thank you for clearing, for bringing that up, Eddie. Um, yeah, I think the citizens know that we can pretty much do any of these things that we were discussing, but in, in lengthy discussion, especially on how we can really, uh, how we have the legal authority to do this, I mean, that, that, that's without being said, so thank you for clarifying that.
Mayor, if it may, just for the record, um, after the removal of, of section twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, and twenty nine, the numbers will be, will be renumbered sections twenty five through thirty two, just for the record.
Thank you.
Mayor, I guess this gives the city the authority that if in the future people were to get out of hand and there's a lot of people late at night after ten, eleven, then the city would have the right to come back and maybe at that time put a curfew. But at this time, uh, I think it would be best to not have a nine P. M., ten P. M. curfew and just continue following the orders that are in place. And right now it's very important that we attack this and we stay on this, not relax on any of our recommendations so that we can get rid of this virus as soon as possible.
Thank you. So we have a motion.
Tell me.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilman Delpando. Any further discussion? Is it, we're clear on the declaration and the, the supplemental resolution, right? Eddie?
Yes, mayor, I'm, right now I'm preparing an email that's going out to you and the council and to Imelda with the red line changes. All she has to do is accept all of the red line changes and she'd be ready to go for you to sign.
All right. No further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Do y'all want to get out of here?
Someone?
Second.
Move to a judge. Second by Councilwoman Ramon. All those in favor? Unanimous. Leading the term, seven thirty four.